Right, it's 5:30 and I'll call this regularly scheduled meeting of the Harlingen City Commission to order. And I'll call upon Mayor Pro Tem Michael Mesmar to deliver an invocation.
Dear God, please hear our prayers. Please look after the sick, the suffering, the imprisoned, those held captive. Please look after those who have the virus. And please look after the doctors, the researchers, the hospital staff, the nurses who take care of the old patients. May the disease pass us all over in your name, in the name of the Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. This time I'd like to welcome everybody to this meeting of the Harlingen City Commission, which is by Zoom and certainly be something we hope we can get past in the coming months, but for now, we practice social distancing and we wear masks. And we watch our distance so that we can protect each other against the coronavirus. So at this time, we have a general citizen communication input.
I'm sorry, but can we do the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance, yes, please. Thank you. All right, please. Flag and face the flag and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir.
All right, so Amanda, we have, I think, one that has signed up for general citizen communication. We have three others that are would like to speak on an item. Is that correct?
That is correct, Mayor. We also have another one there that had sent the form prior to 4:00 PM, and that's Mr. John Lane. And I will proceed with calling Ron Losano right now, and then I'll follow up with Mr. Lane, and then the other three, we will wait until the discussion of the item. So I will proceed on calling Mr. Ron Losano. One moment, please. Hello? Ron, this is Amanda. Ron, you signed up for citizens' communication to talk on taxes. You have two minutes. I will start the clock right now.
Well, as the mayor just indicated before, that little, well, I can't think of the appropriate term that I have in my mind, but as Commissioner Aliva noted, the pledge was needed to be done. I have, in the comment section that you all put out, suggested that I wanted to speak at the public hearing. And of course, the basis for Texas public hearings is to be reasonable. But at this moment, I didn't want to just suggest that at the last meeting, you all took action to, at minimum, suggest that September 16th would be a date for a tax public hearing on the rate. And I note that on your website, there is an indication that there will probably be a public hearing for the budget also. However, it's not ready to be prompted. And I don't see that there would need to be any delay in letting people on the website know. And again, that would just be based on Texas law. But I'll wait for the public hearing to avail myself of the public hearing at the appropriate time. You could reach out to me at that time again.
Okay, thank you so much. Bye.
All right, thank you. Bye.
Mayor, I will proceed with Mr. Lane now.
Hi, this is John. Leave a message at the beep.
Mr. Lane, this is Amanda Elizondo with the city of Harlingen, and you filed the form for a public comments, and we're calling you on that. Thank you so much. Bye. Okay, Mayor, that's it as far as public comments right now.
Very well, thank you. Then we'll go to item one, which is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of July 15, 2020. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing now, is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
Some moved. Second.
There are a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. The motion carries. Next item or items two, A through D, the consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Some move, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item three is the consideration of possible action to award the windstorm hurricane and hail insurance for fiscal year 2020-2021 and authorize the city manager to sign the contract.
I'm trying here. I was trying to click this thing. I'm sorry. Yes, Mayor Commissioners, the city went out for proposals for a windstorm. On July the 12th, we received two proposals. The proposals were reviewed by our consultant, who is actually on the telephone line. And I do have the presentation that I can share on my screen. And I'll go ahead and get it up on the screen. Okay. And I'll, if she's in the line, I'll let her presenting her presentation.
Thank you for coming, sir, for having us today. Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you.
Can hear you.
Thank you very much. I'm still waiting on the Zoom meeting to let me in, so I'm going to kind of go blind with the presentation that we prepared for y'all. And based on that, though, the only thing I can say is congratulations to you by going out for this RFP. The city and Waterworks, which is part of your program, is going to save a substantial amount of money over the current program that you have with the Texas Windstorm Insurance Association. And as was mentioned, you had two responses to the recent RFP that went out. Due to Hurricane Hannah, we actually extended the RFP deadline to allow additional time and provided information to all respondents on the damages that had been sustained as of the time of the RFP. I'm happy to report to you that previous to this, there had been no reported losses, as you'll notice, on the windstorm history. You have been insured with the Texas Windstorm Insurance Association for many years. Your total insured value currently, according to your statement of values provided, is $45,958,050 for scheduled properties both by the city and the water district. Your current annual premium is $401,326. Ah, I'm in. And your current rate on the Texas windstorm policy is .87324, which means for every hundred dollars in value, you're paying about 87 cents for your current coverage. Going on to the next slide, and you'll see that we have a marketing analysis. This is a summary of all the markets that were approached by various brokers and agents looking for coverage for the city in response to this RFP. You'll notice that many of them have declined only because they couldn't offer competitive rates, which is not a bad thing for y'all. This screen is just to show you that there were many markets that were approached on your behalf. The next screen is a side-by-side comparison of the two proposals that were received. And again, both of these proposals are excellent. They both provide you with a savings. There are a couple of reasons that we're recommending Victor Insurance, which by the way is part of the TML group, which is your current program. The main reason you're going to see in the very middle of that of the screen where it says total insured value and deductible, you'll notice that the proposal by Carlisle is a layered program. That's why there's three different sections. The first part of that program has a 3% windstorm hail deductible. And then it has a TWEA policy with a 2%, and then a Lloyd's of London buy down, which is the column with Carlisle. The column with Victor only has one section and both others they included because they proposed only a 1% deductible. And that's a huge improvement over the program that you currently have because currently you have a 2% wind and hail deductible. Again, congratulations to you on doing this. You have a premium savings, whichever route you choose to go. Again, your current premium, as I showed to you on the previous slide, is about $401,000. Either one of these programs provide you significant savings, as you can see, by the total annual premiums that they proposed. And the next screen, on the next slide, what you'll see is a scoring analysis, just so you can see how we scored this, so that everything is very apparent and very clear to everyone. The only difference is truly in the premium pricing and the economic advantage. And what drove that again is the deductible and then the pure premium. Do y'all have any questions so far? Okay, then on to the next slide is our recommendation. We are recommending that due to this RFP process, that the city and Waterworks non-renew the TWEA placement upon expiration, which is October 1. That you accept the proposal that Victor Insurance provided through Ventas Risk Management. This will allow to you to capture a savings annually of $224,516.50 over the expiring program. You will lower your wind hail deductible from 2% to 1%. And that is per occurrence, per location, so that's a very big difference. And you're lowering your rate. This is astounding, especially with today's marketplace. You're lowering your rate from .87, which is 87 cents per hundred dollars of value, to .38, 38 cents per hundred dollars of value. And so if you just compare those rates, that's where you'll see your premium savings is coming. It does allow you to maintain a relationship with TML and your current program manager, which is Victor Insurance. And that's pretty much what our recommendation is. I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
Effron, I had a question, not on the presentation, but when we went out for insurance, was this part, because I remember you saying it was going to include windstorm and hail. This is part of that package?
The, when we went out for the consultant, this consultant, which is a lady that presented, she is part of McGriff Group. So that's what it was including. The consultant was for health insurance, and we also did the consultant for the windstorm.
Oh, okay. All right, I got you. Well, very cool.
And you saved $276,000.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Of course.
That was pretty exciting.
For the same fee, right? Same fee?
Yeah.
Unfortunately, yes, sir.
Does anybody have any other questions? And this company is rated, how is it rated? Now, does it compare the rating of the company we had prior?
Well, you're with TWEA right now. So the Texas Windstorm Insurance Association is guaranteed by the Texas Guarantee Fund. But Ventas Insurance is an A plus eight rated insurance carrier. And so they have, if not better, at least equal footing with what you're paying for right now. And it's an admitted company, so they're under a super fine fees and taxes, and it's part of the guarantee fund.
Very good. All right, is there a motion to award the insurance contract to Victor Insurance replacement with Ventas Risk? We have a motion. Did I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second, Mike Commissioner Liao. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. The motion carries. Well, thank you all for saving us
Really good, Effron.
Over $200,000 on that.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
I can't thank anyone else. We really appreciate it as well. Thank you so much. And if y'all have any questions, don't hesitate to let us know. We really appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Item four is a public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading for a special use permit to allow an adult business, a vape shop, and a general retail QR district located at 1338 North Ed Carey Drive, bearing a legal description of Lot 5, Harlingen Town Center subdivision.
Mayor City Commission, good afternoon.
Excuse me, before Javier begins, I don't have the ordinance in my packet. I don't know if anyone else does.
Javier, do you have the ordinance?
It was, yeah, it's not in the packet, so it got left out of the packet.
Okay, but do you have the ordinance?
Yes. Yeah, we have.
All right, well, I guess he can read the caption once we get to it. All right, go ahead. Go ahead and make your presentation, Javier, please.
Yes. Can you bring the ordinance for the vape shop? Yes, let me. I'm bringing, I'm getting the ordinance. Do I proceed with the presentation or wait?
I would hand out copies to the commission.
Do we need to table this item?
Okay, this is staff who want to recommend that we table the item, so that the
Hey, would it be acceptable if they shared the screen and put it on the screen?
Javier, are you there, Javier?
I don't think he has it, Vic.
Maybe somebody in the office has it on electronic.
Well, Mayor, how about we table it and we can revisit it at the end of the meeting, give it enough time to
Thank you.
Is that a motion, Commissioner?
Yes, please.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second to table?
Second.
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, like sign. The motion carries. Item is tabled. Item number five is consideration possible action approved project update on Boys and Girls Club Gym and Shade Structure Projects. Carlos.
Mayor Commissioners, good afternoon. I was trying to share the, my screen so I can show you the site plan, but you all should have a copy of the site plan. This is a quick, just briefing or update to you, Mayor, and the commission. Again, the, so reminder, back in March, the city commission approved funding to the Boys and Girls Club for an amount of $200,000 for the $1.3 million project and renovations and improvements that they're doing at their facilities. The reason we wanted to bring it back to you all is, again, the, we've been made aware that the site plan has changed slightly. The concept of the project itself is not changing. It's just the site plan. The proposed gym used to sit or was going to be placed on the south side of the property. Now they're looking at relocating that and putting it over the existing skate park. The architect, the engineer, the design team is still working on that, evaluating and exploring that option. We just felt as staff that we needed to bring that to your attention and I guess ask for your feedback or input if you all had any concerns about that.
Carlos, if I can chime in really quick. Mayor Commissioners, if you remember, the, we, the city council approved some funding to help cover the cost of a canopy over the existing basketball court on the east side of the campus there for the Boys and Girls Club. They are asking what they want to do now because they run into some issues with the foundation. They would like to move the basketball course over the skate park and move it to the east, the west side of the campus instead. And what I told Gerald, Gerald's on the line and he can chime in, but I said, let's just inform the city council that we're going to move it. Still going to have a canopy. He's still going to do what he proposed to do on the east side of the building. They're just going to move it over to the west side. Gerald, you have anything to add to that?
Can y'all hear me, first of all?
Yes.
Yes.
The problem we ran into where it says existing basketball courts is what is called a post-tension concrete slab. And of course, we didn't realize that at the beginning, and the engineers pointed that out. And there are some inherent dangers, at least having local contractors dig into that to put the footings for the structure. There's some risk, even the risk of potential injury, you know, should worst case scenarios happen. And so we thought it prudent to consider creating the same effect where our skate park is and moving our skate park onto what is now the existing basketball court. And that's the most simple terms. Some other reasons why that's also a good thing has to do with, you see, there's a neighborhood across from where the basketball courts are now. Those folks would appreciate it. I've talked to a few of the families there and, you know, they liked the idea. We'll still have the two, the covering of the two basketball courts with the canopy, which will still be accessible to the destination park activities anytime we have an activity. And God willing, we will have soon. We'll be able to use the covering in case of inclement weather or anything like that, where folks can get under there and be protected. So the project would be pretty much the same, except switching sides.
Hey, Gerald, are y'all still acting as general contractors?
That is our plan right now unless we run into difficulties that we can't, our
Yeah, this will be called your first change order.
Yes, sir.
Probably won't be your last, but I understand it.
The architect, who is David Monreal with GMS Architects, is about 90% complete with the plans. And once, once he completes those and we get the proper permitting process through the city and get all that set up, we'll be, we'll be going.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Carlos or Gerald?
I have a question on phase two of the destination park. I thought we were going to move or relocate the skate park or the section of the skating park to another, to inside the park.
No, sir. The skate park is not part of the destination park.
Okay.
We do have a phase where the existing parking lot just north of the skate park, that's turned into an amphitheater. But the skate park was not part of our concept.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay, any other, any other questions? If not, then what is the action that you're asking us to take tonight?
You know, I think we just wanted to make sure the city council didn't have any concerns with the changes. If we don't have any concerns, Gerald can just move forward.
Okay, so if somebody has a concern, they need to express it. If not, then we'll just move.
Yeah, I don't think there's any action that needs to be taken. But thanks for the update. I said, I don't think any action needs to be taken, but I appreciate the update.
Yeah. All right, well, but my question, just want to be sure that nobody has an objection. If no one does have an objection, then we'll just move on to the next item, which is item six, consideration possible action to accept or reject bids and award a contract for the ninth and 13th drainage improvement project under bid number 2020-01.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. This project is part of a FEMA grant with an estimated construction value of $2.88 million. It includes 5,600 linear feet of storm sewer improvements and upgrades to the 9th and 13th street system between Tyler Avenue and Pierce Avenue. Five sealed bids were received and opened on Tuesday, July 28, 2020. The apparent lowest bidder was G and G Contractors with a bid of $2,591,644.70. And in review of all the information that has been provided to date, the apparent lowest responsive bidder is G and G Contractors, and the staff is recommending we move forward with authorizing them to proceed with the work. And originally, there, and in the packet, there was some information on possibly looking at the second lowest bidder. However, in the last few days, the contractor has reached out and made assurances to quell any questions that we had with their ability to perform the work, so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Andy, did you rank, rank these, are they ranked, other than the lowest builder?
No, sir. It's lowest bidder.
Okay, but did we, did we rank them at all as far as your performance and whatnot?
No, sir. We just, we just called and verified their references and their past performance.
Okay, so but don't normally, we, normally don't we rank them as far as their performance and we kind of grade them?
Typically, it's lowest, with a, with a construction project, it's lowest bidder. A lot of times with like a request for qualifications, it'll be a ranking system.
There are two types. There's a request, like a request for proposal, and there, and there's competitive, straight competitive bidding. Allison, you want to explain what this is?
Sure. So basically, what we're talking about here is in the event there's a request for proposals, the factors are weighted within the bid packet. You're going to have certain criteria that amount to a certain number of points. And so it's kind of scaled like that. Each vendor is going to get so many points based on so many categories. And from that, from that, in that manner, the city staff, the committee can rank them and make their decision as to the best value for the municipality.
But this wasn't, this wasn't left that way. This was left as a straight competitive bidding project under a different statute, correct?
Right. And so what I was, and the reason I was asking is it is, it is a pretty large package. And I just want to know, you know, is it an experienced company? Have they done work for us before? Are we happy with them? That, and that was my understanding of why we grade them, we grade them the other way.
No.
But again, it's, it was just a question, and I mean, I'll leave it up to Andy. You're the engineer, right?
Yeah, so the award, the award goes to the lowest responsible bidder. And that word responsible is the way that the staff can make sure that they have the credentials necessary to perform the job. And the staff has determined that they are a responsible bidder. Is that correct, Andy?
Correct, Mayor.
Okay.
Andy, may I ask a question?
Absolutely.
In the, in the packet, I mean, you had some derogatory comments there. And, you know, paperwork issues, equipment issues. You've resolved that with them, and I mean, you're happy.
Right, so their, their original packet, they had some, they listed, you know, a few drainage projects. They, they didn't really have the equipment, it looked like. And then in researching it, we're talking about a true general contractor who's going to sub out this work. So what we've done in the past few days is they have zeroed in on specifically which subcontractor will be used for this project. And we reached out to them. We checked their references as well, and we're comfortable with, with who they are choosing as a subcontractor.
Okay, and the paperwork for FEMA, you're happy with responses from them, keeping up to date on that, because that was another area you touched upon.
Right, so that, that, that was some of the feedback we got from, from the references that they left, but you know, it's, it's, ultimately, those projects did get through and they have been completed, so I would hesitate to, to hang my hat solely on that issue.
Okay. I just want to make sure, I just want to make sure that you're, you know, what you gave us earlier, and I read, want to make sure you're, you're, like Commissioner Udebis said, this is your baby, and so.
So I had a question for Dan. Dan, the improvements that were made on Office 77 by the, by the Peter Piper, you know, we had some issues with that, you know, I don't know how many, how many years back. Is there anything that we, that we are doing or done to prevent or protect ourselves from that? Um, is there anything that we, that we are doing or done to, to prevent or protect ourselves from, from that? Or any kind of, I, I don't, I know it's kind of hard for them to warranty the work, but, you know, any suggestions on how?
Well, we, we do, we do get a, a one-year warranty with any project that's done.
Oh, good.
Uh, in addition to that, we also get a performance and payment bond, which is what we went after with that contractor you're referring to.
Okay, okay.
Uh, you know, at any given time, uh, things can happen, Commissioner, we can't really predict all obstacles that we're running across. But we do put safeguards in place to make sure that these projects can move forward.
Okay, yeah, Mesmar has a question, the total cost and then how much of the cost do we have to pay?
So that is a, uh, part of the FEMA grant, let me pull that up, I have that information here. Um, I believe we were in line for approximately one point six million, I can get you the specific figure, uh, here.
Ball parks are good.
Okay.
It was one point six million.
So we're gonna be up, we're gonna be, uh, uh, good for the other one million.
Correct, FEMA will cover the other, the other.
And this has been budgeted and anticipated since last year.
Right.
Yes.
So, so we're, we're actually, I think we're better off than what the estimates are.
Yes, and it's a drainage project.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and, and I appreciate it very much because this is in my district. And, and, and the improvements they've done over the last year and a half or so has been tremendous and this is gonna help overall.
Well, actually, doesn't this one go what, east? It doesn't go, I mean, it goes south, doesn't go north, is that correct?
Correct.
I think it's from Tyler South, Tyler to Pierce. So that's, that's in, that's in Udebis and Mesmar's area.
Okay, is there a motion to, is there a motion to award the, uh, uh, to award the bid to G and G Contractors?
Some of.
Second back end.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those, like, those opposed, like sign. The motion carries, this is a great, uh, additional step forward in our master drainage, uh, plan, and I congratulate the staff on getting this, uh, to the point where we're ready to get, get started and implement another phase of our, of our drainage program. Thank you. Item seven is consideration of possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading to amend the City of Harlingen Code of Ordinances, Chapter one eleven zoning article twelve, section one eleven dash three twenty nine, gasoline stations by deleting this section in its entirety. This item was tabled at the last meeting, is there a motion to remove this item from the table?
Some move, Mayor.
Second, we have a motion of second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
All right, those opposed?
Mayor, uh, can we take them both off the table at the same time or we have to do them one at a time?
I didn't hear you, Commissioner.
I said, do we have to, can we take them both off the table at the same time or do we need to do them one at a time? Seven and eight are, are, were tabled from the last meeting.
Allison?
Well, I mean, it's, I don't, I don't know, since we're not on item eight.
Okay, fair enough.
Let's do it item by item.
All right, so anyway, I think we, I, I heard a, I heard three votes in favor of removing from the table.
I have mine.
Okay, so the item is ta, is removed from the table. And, uh, I'll go, I guess I'll go back to Javier to, uh, or the staff to make a summary presentation.
Yes, Mayor, we do have three people that signed up to speak, I don't know, you wanna do that first or later?
Well, we heard, I think we heard a presentation the last time. Do we want to hear another presentation or does, do we simply want to discuss it?
It, Mayor, it's a, it's the same presentation, it's a scaled down version. Uh, but as, we do have three folks that want to talk on this item.
Yeah, I think we should go straight to discussion.
Well, do, do we have somebody that wanted to know the hearing? There are three people you said?
Yeah, okay, well, I, uh, if we're gonna hear a presentation, that's fine, if we're not, then we'll, uh, we'll allow the three. Does anybody want to see the summary presentation?
No, thank you.
All right, then, then, uh, Amanda, let's call the three individuals who asked to speak on this item.
Okay, first one is Daniel Galván, one fifteen West Mc, uh, McIntyre Street. I would like to speak on the ordinance amendment, one moment, Mayor.
Amanda, where did you say he was from?
Uh, one fifteen McIntyre Street, um, I, I don't know if that's in.
The number you dialed is.
I don't know if that's in Edinburgh or here in Harlingen, it's probably in Edinburgh. But, cause the call that I got from them showed that it was in Edinburgh. Let me proceed on the call.
Yes, please proceed with the call.
So Galván, this is Amanda Lysando with the City of Harlingen. And you signed up to speak on the public comments and for calling you, um, so, thank you so much. I pres, I'll, I will proceed with the next one, Mayor, that is Bill Morris, the same, uh, same street, one fifteen West McIntyre Street. We were having issues with the phone there earlier, so it doesn't work, we tried again. Yes, Mayor, I'll call him on the, uh, cell phone from my cell phone.
All right, thank you.
This is Bill.
Bill, this is Amanda Lysando with the City of Harlingen. You said, okay, um, you, Mr. Morris, you have two minutes, so you might start now. And the commission, okay, thank you so much.
My name is, uh, Bill Morris, William Morris, I go by Bill, I'm a professional engineer. I'm registered in fourteen states with forty-one years of experience specializing in the design of fuel systems. Clients for Circle K, the Department of Defense, uh, and also do work as an expert witness for the Department of Justice and law firms. Uh, we are the keepers of the fuel prototypes for Circle K as well as the Army and Air Force Exchange Service and the Defense Logistics Agency. Um, I can tell you that the fuel system at Circle K is, uh, proposing to put in here as state of the art. Uh, it meets or exceeds the latest EPA regulations, which were updated, uh, to be more stringent in twenty fifteen. Uh, as well as the state of Texas, uh, regulations that were also adopted in, uh, after the EPA's, uh, enhanced regulations. Uh, they also comply with the Petroleum Equipment Institute, uh, recommended practices, uh, and the NFPA, uh, codes thirty and thirty A. And I'm members of most of these associations. Um, uh, we have, uh, permitted facilities for them all over the United States. And, uh, I am not aware of them ever having, uh, a, um, an issue with their, a major issue with their skill system. But I, I can assure you, today's, um, uh, systems that are put in by these corporations are not, uh, you know, your, your mother and father's, uh, fuel stations that were put in in the eighties and the nineties that have caused so many problems in the past, that's why the regulations were updated in twenty fifteen. Uh, and again.
Mr. Morris, your, your two minutes are up.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Morris. Uh, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Morris? Okay, let's go then to the next, uh, person that signed up, please.
Okay.
Sorry.
All right, Mr. Reyna, this is Amanda Lysando with the City of Harlingen. You asked to, you asked to speak on, um, on item number, I believe, seven, amending an ordinance, so you have two minutes and I will put the timer. When the two minutes are up, I will let you know. Thank you so much, you may, you may proceed.
Thank you, Amanda. Mayor, member of the commission, uh, thank you so much for allowing me the opportunity to, uh, you know, discuss this item here today. And I'm here more to offer a, a suggestion. And so I think everyone on his body is in agreement that the ordinance as it stands today is, uh, somewhat dated and, and probably needs to be updated. Um, but I can appreciate that some of the members of his body would like to do so in a, in an orderly manner that's safe to the public. And you do it correctly. Um, you don't want to rush this and, and do it incorrectly and then have issues later, that won't be good for anyone. Um, so I can appreciate that. But the suggestion that I have is the item, the, the verb is that you want to remove, I think it makes all the sense in the world to remove it. Um, we've done gas stations here at Meldenham for, for many years. I don't think we ever came across an ordinance of this nature. Um, and, and to protect you and to protect the city and your constituents, um, a suggestion to do is maybe put in place a conditional use permit, um, similar to other cities. And, and you could take the conditional use permit a step further. Uh, you could require a full site plan and a landscape plan. And it would have to be advertised to a certain radius, um, and it will come before you as a public hearing. So as a suggestion to maybe move this topic forward, um, I think that would work well for the city and will work well for, you know, proposed developers coming into Harlingen. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. Um, I've been in discussion with the neighbors and, and we, we started this dialogue and I told them I was gonna propose this tonight. And, uh, and so the people I discussed this with have responded favorably. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Does anybody have any questions? Okay. Then you, was that Mr. Reyna or Mr. Galván?
Uh, that was Mr. Reyna, Mario Reyna.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Reyna. Uh, do we want to?
Thank you, Mayor.
Do we want to try to call Mr. Galván back?
Uh, yes, Mayor, I will call him.
New Bridge nine five six four five one two nine eight three, please leave a message.
So he's not responding.
Okay, well, that, that's all of the, uh, citizen communication we had then, uh, on that item. We did attempt twice to reach Mr. Galván, so, uh, let's go, uh, to the item. I guess I'm gonna ask the city attorney to read the ordinance. Read the caption.
An ordinance amending the City of Harlingen Code of Ordinances, Chapter one eleven zoning, article twelve, section one eleven, three twenty-nine, gasoline stations by deleting this section in its entirety, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
All right, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Some of.
Is there a second? Okay, Mr. Mesmar is indicating a second. Is there any discussion?
I, I'd like to know if, um, uh, uh, the concern I have is not so much the story stance, but it's the, the traffic impact. I think that's where initially when we discussed the last time, the question was, you know, the, the, um, the traffic count, traffic studies, the impact of what, what that would do to that, to that, um, to those streets. Um, I know I talked to Dan and, and, uh, we had a figure of thirty-one thousand cars pass through Tyler and Harrison both combined. Um, I know there was an exception made, uh, in twenty eleven, uh, with an HEB, right? Uh, but that traffic count was about eleven thousand, uh, traffic. But, uh, I was hoping that, that, uh, whether we did it in-house or, um, Circle K would do that as far as any, just, just, um, to understand the impact of the traffic, uh, or the safety of that, because it's a high traffic. I mean, they're, they're very, um, the convenience stores are, are, um, high traffic, um, people. Uh, I'll share with, it, it, back in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, my employer, uh, we tried to, uh, build a restaurant on Tyler, uh, between Church's Chicken and the Laundromat. And, uh, we got denied or the, the, my, the, my boss got denied because of a traffic count. Uh, it said that the restaurant was gonna create too much traffic down, down Tyler. Uh, and this is a little bit further down, uh, maybe a mile away from, from, from this proposed site. So, um, I would feel comfortable just knowing what the, uh, because it, not, not going against the development, but if there's things that need to be, need to be put in place, uh, to alleviate some of those safety concerns with the number of traffic, uh, that it's gonna cause or incur, because it's a new gas station or whatever. Um, I would feel more comfortable with them.
Well, I would just, uh, point out that Tyler and Harrison are both state highways. Uh, we don't.
I'm confused, aren't we just talking about the ordinance?
Yeah.
Correct, and, and so, go, go ahead, Mike, oh, you're done, okay. Ma- Mayor, I mean, what I wanted to, to, to say was that is a state highway. Um, in fact, we have lots of state highways in Harlingen, Texas. Uh, I don't think having a convenience store on a state highways and it changed the count, that is a high traffic area. I, I think, I think the real, the, the, the real concern was at the time, uh, you know, is, it was the schools. And, you know, we, we have a letter that just arrived within, you know, the last hour, hour and a half from St. Anthony's where they're saying they have no issue with it. I, I think the real concern that I had when we started this.
I, I, I'm, excuse me, I'm still, I'm still confused, we're talking about the ordinance.
Well, let, let Commissioner Al finish.
The only problem I have with eliminating the ordinance, you know, the change in the ordinance is non-state highways. So, at, at this point, I have no issue taking this out. Maybe we put an asterisk there that this does not apply to state highway locations, but it applies to some neighborhood where there may be a school, um, within five hundred feet and we can discuss it, make, instead of making it a, they can't do it, we make it, wha- what did we call the, uh, special use permit or whatever we call that?
Right, that's what other cities have, special use permit or condition, or condition.
Conditional permit for anything, oh, that will be within five hundred of a school and it's not on a state highway, because the state highway is a state highway. I mean, we're, traffic is gonna be traffic, we can't, we can't impede it. we can't impede it and it's, and it is already, it's already commercial, I mean, that's, that's all general retail zoned up and down Tyler and Harrison.
Okay.
So the answer is Mr. Mesmar, you know, that's what I want to do, I'm saying, let's go ahead and remove this, but maybe we should revisit a conditional.
Mr. Mesmar was next, I believe.
Uh-oh.
So, can I, Commissioner, Commissioner Pointe?
Okay, a, and I, I agree with what you're saying, Victor, but, but again, my, I'm confused too because what I was worried about obviously were the children of the, and not just the school district or schools, but in, in the area. And so what I, and initially when we tabled this, it was for us to gather more information and I feel and some others have voiced the same concern is that we're rushing into this and we're still, we're still lacking some information that I'd like to get uh, as far as a state highway, like you said. Um, and again, it, it's, I, I'm pro-business, I like Circle K, I want them to come to, to town, obviously. I was jealous when Sam Nito got them before we did, but I just wanted to look at some more information to see if we could get, get some more, because it, honestly, the first presentation that was given to us, there was a lot of misleading and misinformation that we received that I'm still confused on, uh, as far as letters being sent out and letters of support. Um, the la, the la, the, the letter that you just mentioned from the, from Father Flotus from St. Anthony's is a letter from him not opposing it and supporting it, it's not necessarily from the congregation, but having said that.
Go ahead, I'll shut up.
I, I just, I just feel like we're rushing into this and I really want to look at, into some more parameters that are going on with this and so you know, if, I don't know if this is the right time to, uh, table this again or if we can, uh, but it's just.
I'd like to hear from everybody before we, somebody files, asks a motion to table. Uh, because there's no discussion on a motion table and, and I think we need to, we need to have some discussion tonight.
I want to go back to what Mes, Mesmar said, this is about the ordinance, it's not about Circle K, it's not about XYZ Company. This is a, it's just ordinary general retail and, and, and the whole issue was about whether or not you can have tanks in the ground within 500 feet of a school. It's got nothing to do with Circle K, Stripes. I'll name them all, 7-Eleven, that way everybody gets equal advertising out there, I think it's about can you put a tank in the ground within 500 feet of a school and my whole, only response is, if it's on a state highway, it's inevitable.
Okay, Commissioner Mesmar, did, did, you had earlier expressed a, a desire to speak, do you still want to?
Yeah, uh, I think we should go with the ordinance and just get up to modern times. Uh, where and when a, uh, service station or a, uh, a gas station or a convenience store goes in someplace, that's item number eight and in the future, let's just pass an ordinance.
Okay. Is there anyone else who'd like to, uh, speak on the or, on the ordinance?
Again, is this, is this the ordinance that we're, we're, we're voting on tonight, does, it's not about the, the business that's coming in?
That's correct.
All right.
Yeah, and my, my concern, uh, I'll tell you that my concern really is that we, that and, and it goes to, uh, to everything that we do here with regard to development and that is that we should treat, we should be consistent with businesses that come to Harlingen, we should not, um, and, and for whatever reason, this is resulting, this could result in an inconsistency if we don't allow this project to move forward and because we allowed the variance for HEB over on Morgan Boulevard next to St. Albans Day School. I can, I can cite a number of other examples, there was an Exxon station right next to Vernon, uh, Vernon Middle School for years and years and then there are some other sites in our community where this is allowed to happen and we just should not, we shouldn't treat businesses inconsistently, we should treat them, uh, the same, so.
And Mayor, to that point, um, in our packet was historical, why we got to this point and when you read the historical, it had nothing to do with safety as far as the gasoline tanks, it had to do with traffic. And, and so tha, that's why I'm saying, that's a state highway already, it's no, it's not, it's not a regular, you know, like, in my neighborhood here, somebody's going to put a, a.
Is there, is there any other discussion?
Yes, in, in that, what you said, Victor, I, part of it is, in the original, uh, uh, ordinance, it was a basic issue and the commissioners back then did mention the safety of our, of the children walking up and down two and. And so, I agree with the mayor.
Any other, any, somebody called a question?
Is.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, and, and I wasn't finished, Mayor, in, in the consistency, and I agree with the mayor, we do have to be consistent and that's why Stripes, for example, there's no stripes in the city, within the City of Harlingen that has their, their convenience stores near a, a, a school because of this ordinance, because they were concerned about the safety, so again, you know, I agree with everything y'all are saying, but my main concern are the children of our, our, our community, especially because this is part of my district. And so I just, I'm not saying no, I'm just saying, I'm just asking for more time.
Okay. Well, tonight we have a motion and a second in, uh, in favor of amending the ordinance. Is there any other discussion? If there's not, all those in favor say aye, please signify with a hand sign so I can.
Aye.
So you'd see, those, all right, uh, so those opposed?
Aye.
All right, so it's, uh, four to one, uh, the, the motion to amend the ordinance passes. Thank you, item eight, consideration of possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading to amend the City of Harlingen Code of Ordinances, Chapter 103 Buildings and Building Regulations, Article 1, Section 103 dash 2, Restrictions on Permits for Storage or Dispensation Facilities by deleting this section in its entirety.
I, I'll make the motion to take it off the table once again, Mayor.
All right, we have a second to remove it from the table, all those say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, all right, uh, item's not, has been removed from the table. Uh, can we read the caption, please?
An ordinance amending the City of Harlingen Code of Ordinances, Chapter 103, Buildings and Building Regulations, Article 1, Section 103, 2, Restrictions on Permits for Storage or Dispensation Facilities for Certain Fuels by deleting this section in its entirety, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
This is essentially the same thing, is that right?
Yeah, mo, motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second, is there any, any discussion? All those in favor say aye, please signify with a hand sign so we can. Those opposed?
Aye.
All right, so we have, uh, the motion passes four to one. All right, thank you, item nine, our board appointments, does anybody have any board appointments?
I have none, sir.
All right, hearing none, that is the last item on our.
We, we asked the table the item to give Javier a chance to get the, the, uh, the ordinance, does, did Javier ever get a chance to, so we can go back and reconsider item four? We tabled just to the end of this meeting.
We can allow him to get the ordinance.
Javier, can we bring it back at the next meeting?
Sure. Okay.
We. Okay, well, I mean, unless, I, I thought.
We can share the screen and so we're ready to go, or it can be tabled, whatever you prefer.
Okay, we're, so we're going to leave it on the table until the next meeting, is that right? All right, then, that's all, then we, uh, are concluded with our meeting, we have no other items. So thank you, everybody, we are, we are adjourned, good night, everyone, have a safe.
One minute.
Evening.